My names and notes are here, these are my salary I'm reading, but it's simple to not forget that way. I'm Lee Perryman, I'm on Sulacaga City Council. And I have the pleasure of working with this great team of city council members, Donnie Blackman, Dallas Davenport, Ashton Fowler, Tiffany Nix, and our mayor Jim Heigl. I should note as we get started that this is not a council meeting, and as such, we will not be deliberating or taking any action. We're here to listen as part of a healthy discussion. If you have cell phones, would you please put them on stun or silent? If you need to exit, would you please exit to my right, to your left? That's the only door that's available for exiting. It's unusual that we have this much participation, we appreciate it. Historically, not just in Sulacaga, but in other municipalities, very few people actually participate in government and attend council meetings, work sessions, hearings, et cetera. People are simply too busy or too disinterested unless a road didn't get paved, or a neighborhood tree needs trimming, or a trash pickup is missed, or there's a pothole, or there's a crime spree. So we do appreciate you attending. With that in mind, I'd like to take five minutes, I beg for five minutes, to explain a few things that might be helpful going forward in the future. First, a reminder that city council meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays of every month, normally at 6:00 PM with a work session just prior at 5:00 PM. All of our work sessions and our council members are open to the public. Our goal as the city's leadership is to be visible, accessible, informative, transparent, and engaged. We are trying very hard and thrive on doing the right thing and thinking big picture. The city's new website, cityofsulacagadotnet, developed by this administration, is the first city website in a decade. There, we've posted comprehensive resources covering how the city, its departments and related boards, authorities, and commissions work, how you can work with the city. All approved city council meeting minutes are also available there. Our meeting schedule and the names of those serving on city boards, authorities, commissions, and subordinate entities are on the website. The council appoints most board members and will soon be advertising for openings on many boards and authorities as terms expire. If you're interested in serving, we would greatly appreciate your engagement and appreciate your participation in the government of our city. With the mayor's help, the city adopted a balanced budget for fiscal year 2018 with a small surplus. Funded by savings and focused on planning, we were able to refinance much of the city's long-term debt at lower interest rates and secure additional funding for important infrastructure improvement projects. Tomorrow afternoon, it's expected that the council will approve final recommendations for road and street paving with a majority, with a major multimillion dollar project to begin as early as spring, only a few months away. To take advantage of great grant funding, we also expect to approve a downtown streetscape project soon with almost 80% free grant money focused on multiple blocks of Broadway and rear parking areas. You may not know that based on recommendations from the planning commission, we've also approved a new residential loft ordinance for downtown business areas, meaning that residences can be upstairs, which will encourage redevelopment, we believe, downtown. We want to protect the core and not let it die, as has been the case in other communities. Lastly, we'll soon review proposals for a major project to upgrade and repair city buildings, property, and other assets, all of which have been deferred for part too long. We're also looking at rebuilding and building new recreational facilities. Overall, I expect that we'll be spending about $7 million in projects this year alone without placing any additional financial burden on you and other citizens through, for example, increased sales taxes. I'm personally opposed to sales tax increases, and I believe other city council members feel the same way. We have one of the lowest overall sales tax rates in the area, 8% versus a typical 10%, and I believe that's an important advantage. As our retail base and options improve, it presents reasons for people to spend money locally and for outsiders to come in. Especially investors shop here, they leave additional revenue for their city for fuel, food, and other purchases, being the same as other cities in the area would give us no particular competitive experience. Major industrial and retail development in the Sulacaga area continues. Hundreds of new jobs were created in 2017. The Sulacaga-Talavika area was recently ranked number one in the nation for manufacturing jobs, and we rank in the top 10 in Alabama for wages. Our new shopping center will open in May, and more development is coming. Sulacaga City Schools, in coordination with the Parks and Recreation Department, will complete three major projects this month. A new baseball field at Babe Ruth Noble Park, a new girls softball field at Pinecrest, and a new soccer field near the renovated Legion Stadium. Look at them if you haven't, they're quite impressive. You may also not know that the city has an amazing recreational facility at the edge of the Talavika National Forest, Lake Howard. The city council has made substantial investments in funding upgrades to that facility with the help from the Sulacaga Utilities Board. Lake Howard is governed by the Lake Howard Authority, one of our boards, commissions, and authorities. The Sulacaga Parks and Recreation Department is playing a key role in managing that asset. Now to youth sports, which is why all of you are here. There are two youth baseball organizations in Sulacaga, Little League and Cal Ripken. The same kids, the same age groups play in both. Little League is the oldest, yet its enrollment statewide has declined over the years while Cal Ripken has continued to grow and is exponentially larger. Contrary to all the hype, the city and the city council have no interest in destroying or authority to somehow kill the Little League, and we have not said that that's what we're doing. Kids who want to play baseball can play baseball with any patch they want on their uniforms. As we take close looks at everything we do with city assets and how we can invest, we think it's wise to facilitate healthy discussions that create the best, most rewarding, and most competitive experiences and facilities for the kids. That's what we've set in motion, and again, that's why you're here, and we appreciate it. For whatever reason, the contract with the Little League organization for youth ballfields has been directly with the city rather than with Parks and Recreation. At the last council meeting, the city council exercised a provision in that agreement, signed by both parties, which allowed for termination with a one-year notice. Again, issuing that notice in no way means that we do not support the Little League or youth sports. It does not mean we're somehow shutting down Little League or banishing them from city property. It's silly to think that. I should note that both Ashton and I played Little League, but I'm sure he was a lot better at it than me. The city pays the cost of utilities and is also ultimately responsible for the property, which is not a big deal. But a particular legal problem in the current contract is that it grants, as written, exclusive use of those ballfields to the Little League, meaning contractually, they can't be used for anything else. So that also is something that needs to be addressed. In my personal opinion, in an ideal world, all city parks and recreational facilities should be under the control and authority of the organization that's responsible for almost everything else. That's why Parks and Recreation Department exists. The one-year notice, which again is simply an option in the current agreement, not a one-sided city idea, simply gives us the time, over the next year, to have such discussion with Parks and Recreation, and we have not had any discussions, formal discussions with Parks and Recreation about this. And to work with the leagues to consider proper transitions for the next playing seasons. That's the reason for the one-year. If we'd done it at any other time, the timing would have been on. The timing was important. Ideally, Little League could then have an agreement with Parks and Recreation, as other groups do, to use Parks and Recreation facilities. And Parks and Rec could then include those facilities in the master planning if the city is looking to invest more money in unified, expanded, improved Parks and Recreation facilities. So simply put, from a business perspective, unifying everything under the Parks and Rec Department, if that idea works, would allow the city to think bigger and properly prioritize future projects and investments. As standalone afterthoughts, the existing ballfields, which I know also need upgrades and do not have enough parking, may not have been included in many master Parks and Rec revitalization planning. They've been left out and not talked about. Again, we want to make logical, strategic, comprehensive, long-term investments, and in this case, in the kids. Over the last several months, city council member Ashton Fowler leading discussions with Little League and Cal Ripken. I'm going to hand off him now. At some point, we will allow people to speak, and Ashton will coordinate that. If you do speak, we want to make sure that it's limited so everyone can speak, so it'll be a three-minute limit on speaking once Ashton has gone through. And we would need you to come forward, state your name and address, confirming that you're a city resident before speaking. So now, Ashton.
Are you ready? Now, some of this stuff, forgive me if it's repetitive, we didn't really talk about each other's statements, but we're all here tonight for the same thing, to discuss our sides, being formed on the other sides of each youth organization that's in town. Before we get started, I'd like to thank everybody for being here to show us that you care and you're here to see what goes on with each side. So this will be a civilized meeting, both sides will be heard by the council, while the council asks their questions, and vice versa. We'll be talking to the board, league reps at first, and then after all is said and done, we'll have, like Lee said, people come up, state your name and address at this podium, ask any questions toward the council, and if the league reps need to step in, they answer anything that we do not know about their specific leagues. Before we do get started and I hand it open up, I'd like to let a few things be known. One, like I said, some is repetitive. A letter was drafted up and sent to Sulacaga Little League via the provision in the contract signed by Little League and city council back in '07 and again in 2014. I am the one that has had meetings with both sides so far, not even a council member. That's one reason why we're here as well, so each council member can form their own opinion, and nothing is being said about me forcing anything of them or letting them know only what I would have done to them, what we've done to hear. So we're all getting the opinion of each side, and that's the reason there's five of us, so we can all discuss the best options for the city and talk about that. Nothing, number three, nothing has been done, will be done, in private, behind closed doors. All discussions are taking place in work sessions and council meetings, and they're performed out in the council meetings afterwards. The public is invited, everyone's encouraged to come and be up to date with all city matters. We historically have had low attendance over this term since we've been voted in and beforehand, saying the majority of the time, I count on my hands how many are attended. So with that as an encouraging factor, everybody's here, I'd like to see the positivity coming out of this. I've said before, you know, to see everybody taking a side and arguing their side and talking about the city and what they've done, each thing, it means a lot that we're here and not at home arguing over the computer. Ford, the board has cash in Babe Ruth, they have never and will never have anything to do with the properties, the movement, everything that's going on since a few months ago when I contacted Rocky and Steve. Their focus is on the Walrus Field, Pinecrest Field as well, nothing else further than that in those regards with this situation. Money is no issue, as you heard Lee state, or worried, and to say so is inaccurate. This was brought into play for the kids and the kids only. Numbers we as a council will have to look at are strictly boys baseball, no softball, soccer, flag football, challenger league, et cetera. I will say, each organization has their own special needs league. You look at the challenger league, Cal Ripken has Fambino Buddy Ball, same exact thing. You have kids out there that each have a buddy to help them, five to 19-year-old kids. The buddy can be any age, help them hit, throw, pitch, do everything they need to do. So it was never activated, of course, because Little League's done such a good job with their challenger league. You had two of those, then it would disband both of them basically if you had to. So, boys baseball, the numbers we have to analyze and see what the best decision is as a council. And what brought me to reaching out to these parties first off is the fact that the two leagues are in this town of 12,000 or a little plus. Yes, they both are playing and cooperating, but the opportunity is too large not to look at combining leagues and having all kids play together. I talked with you, Rocky, about all this, and that when the numbers get here for you guys, you know, you should bring them up and discuss them and talk to them, but...
I can tell you the boys numbers, I'm on that.
Okay.
176.
176 for Sulacaga Little League, and this is what I was sent and researched on the website from Cal Ripken, and I'm going to send some numbers from Steve as well on Cal Ripken's numbers. And I'll speak a little louder. This is something that is online and public information and stuff, and there's 365 local leagues, statewide, so statewide, 16,000 players in each league statewide, and following leagues, the ones that ran in 2017, or following cities, and Cal Ripken in '17. There's, I mean, I'm not going to go through all of them, Melrose City, you know, you've got Ashland Athens, that more, all these, all the way down to South, Mobile, Wadley's, or Sulcog, Swigwar, and there's plenty to go through. For the 2018 season, road field, switching from Little League to Cal Ripken, Huntsville is in discussion about doing the same. That's it, they're just discussing. And the following leagues are coming from Dixie Youth to Cal Ripken. And again, I got this in pants so I could prepare it, but that was just something I put up for those. And coming into this, I had no idea, the numbers, the amount of players, kids, that each side had. You know, matter of fact, there's even a larger one than Cal Ripken, and that's Dixie Youth in the state of Alabama, just to be known. So as I looked further, realized with Little League that there were three active districts in the state, limited organizations at each. That played into a part, but the real thing is here in Sulcog, in our current situation, the kids are not playing together, therefore missing out on building chemistry and having that important competitive factor that builds character and lasting memories. I can't tell you how many of those I have from competing on the field with my fellow friends and stuff, and you know, we still talk about it today, and you know, whether it's being mad at competing or anything like that, it creates friendship and you grow as a person that way. We have kids now that are entering Babe Ruth in high school and have been for a few years that have never played with each other. They may know each other from school, but have no clue how each hits and pitches, throws fields. This takes years to develop by playing with or against each other from a young age. Sulcog was a top-tier baseball for many, many years, and we can get back to that with little compromise and hard work, and that's in the works as we speak. There are no personal vendettas against anyone in this room, contrary to many things. I publicly and privately told Rocky and Jamie that how good of a job that he and his board have been doing since taking over, I mean, y'all double numbers in two years, two seasons. I'm looking at it as logistical as possible by pulling resources together and kids together. Also, a long-term plan, you know, not this year, next year, I'm talking 10, 5, 10, 20 years. The trend's pending, the way it's been going the last 10 years, Little League would no longer be in Alabama at the time, and we'd be stuck in an even bigger predicament. I've mentioned kids a few times, and that's something I've seen online, interviews and things like that that's being laid out. We have to put them at the front and, you know, put our pride and power aside and say, you know, what's best for our kids, my kids, this year, next year, when they get up to the next level in high school and middle school, or even in, you know, even when they get into the real world, and you think, well, that makes no sense, but just think of it this way, when you get passed over for that promotion, your boss passes you over for a promotion, and you don't argue with them and say, hey, I need that, I do the same job, I'm in the same position. You get out there, you show up early, you stay late, you work your tail off studying, do what you can do. And that's some of the qualities that competition brings out in a human period, no matter what's for, what you're doing, if there's competition, those qualities come out. So you want to be the best, that's why it brings it out. So, and then some of these kids are missing out on that. And as far as the kids go, that's why I reached out to both parties initially, and that's what it's all about. So the fact that there's any rumor swirling, we're here to ridicule those, cut them out, cut the rumor mills out. You know, if there's anything, anybody that says I have a personal agenda something up my sleeve or anything, they're completely wrong. You know, I said it was for the kids for the first time, you know, that's why I thought my wife, who is from Atlanta, had moved down here and stayed here in small town Sulcog. And that's why my wife teaches for a living. That's why I work for the boys club and handed out bikes and presents and stuff for the kids. That's why I go down to the middle school and speak to the kids about career path, professionalism and such. It's all for the kids, that's the most important thing. When you don't prepare them, you're setting yourself up for failure in the future, because they're the ones that are going to take your place and et cetera. People slander mine and the council's name is uncalled for, you know, it can be handled, and you know, it's no big deal, but the threats and the unreasoning accusations have to be stopped, and that's what we're here today to all be informed so we can go away from this 100% in the known. And for the ones who called me in the midst of all this, simply asking, hey, what's going on, what's true, what's not true? Thank y'all, and we know when we hang up the phone, if you still don't agree with me, then that's 100% informative, it's a decision, and you're not basing it off of a Facebook comment or something that you said, that he said, that he said. You know, one last thing before I open it up, you know, pride is great, but it shouldn't get in the way of progress. Anyone else have something to say before we open up? Dallas, don't it?
Okay. I think I missed it, but Rocky, you said 176.
I think it's 176.
I all love you, man. How many of those right here in Sulcog will carry?
See? Your question is, how many players do we have?
Right.
406.
406.
That's what we had of 2017.
Let's say under Little League, we have girls, and, I mean, we were asked not to use those numbers, but under the Little League banner, we have girls softball, we have challenger league.
What would all the total be? Add it to the 176.
Anywhere? I don't know the exact number. Steve might when he gets here, but it's going to be 340 or 330, 350, something like that.
We're trying to get an overall opinion, because Ashton mentioned, this has been sort of informative to some of us, because we just hadn't made for y'all, we didn't know. And that's the purpose of this, is for us to hear some piece of y'all, and then we might have some accurate information based whatever we feel like.
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
Okay, I'll do better. I forgot all I said, so I can't... I'll do better.
Well, I just want to go on record as to say, you know, we're not trying to wipe Little League out at all. Like Lee said, you know, the fields are city property, and we're moving forward, trying to just update everything, you know, and just do what's best for the city. So I mean, if that's what works for y'all and what you got going on works for you, I'm fine with it. The only thing I have a problem with is just the sole use of the field, because I mean, we have to come in and we want to do upgrades and maintenance and all this and that, so of course, you know, we should have some access to the field too. So I just hope that by all of us being here, that some way, your board and us, we can just come together and do what's best for everybody, so...
We do all the upgrades and all of those fields.
I know, but moving forward, you know, like Lee said, we want to, you know, get it, put it to part of, you know, the master plan. Like you said, you know, we may want to do something with some parking or maybe redo the fields, who knows? That's why I said, hopefully, we can sit down and talk and come together, because I'm sure there may be some things that y'all see that need to be done to the field that you can't pay for, right? I mean, I don't know, just guess.
We spent this year, six, five years, hard for them.
Well, hopefully, we can just all get on the same page and just do what's best for everybody, what's best for the kids, because I mean, the kids are the ones who play on the field. The field is for the kids. It's not, like you said, like Ashton said, it's not about us, it's about the kids. So moving forward, hopefully, we can just all get on the same page and just do what's best for everybody.
Yeah, so feel free, if you want to, if not, oppose your side or opposition, I guess you'd say, of what, you know, we all know, but you know, speak on what Little League's about, what's going on, the past since you've been president, and then Steve, do the same, what's going on with the baseball side of things, and what's to come in the future, what you see in the future, and anything, rather, committee you got to pull.
Oh, I mean, over the past year, we've built our numbers, and I mean, that's when all this happened, that's when I started hearing about, that's the bottom. And I'm all for talking about it, but what a lot of people are not seeing is, you know, he had his way of doing the, you know, two charters, and I don't really see how you can do that. I mean, with Little League rules, you could, and you know, some kids could play Cal Ripken under their charter and then come play on our all-star thing. It can't, you can't do that, but my thing was to go with Little League, and the big thing around here, people go where the numbers are, and a lot of them like 57 ball, we go. If we all went Little League, then Parks and Rec Board, they could help out, do whatever they need to, but go Little League, go 57, you got numbers in 57, I mean, that.
57, you mean the baseball, longer bases, long pitch-in, lean-all, all that?
But I need a microphone. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, pass it down.
Pass it down. First of all, let me...
Is it working?
Yeah. Let me start by saying, I respect what y'all did, absolutely. I played Little League, loved it, won the state championship playing Little League, coached Little League for eight years. My job is to run Cal Ripken. I do my job to the best of my ability, you know. I'm not married to Cal Ripken. I don't for once think that Cal Ripken is the best organization in the world. Our program is not perfect. We could use a lot of help from volunteers and stuff. You know, I've simply been called by Ashton to come forward and try to bring solutions to bring these two leagues together. That's all I've done. We didn't approach y'all to start this conversation. I, from the Sulcog Parks and Rec Board, have simply stepped in to try to be a part of the That's all I have to say, unless you got questions.
Any other proposals? We'll talk about the proposals that have been presented by both sides and coming together, the type of stuff that we still mentioned.
Where can you find those proposals?
No, I mean, we talked about it in the meeting about how we dissolved, dissolved two in the war.
What proposals?
Well, Steve, you don't talk about what...
The proposals that I brought to the meeting included, the first was forming a committee with reps from both leagues, included with other people in the community, hopefully local high school baseball coaches. We bring in several different leagues, Cal Ripken, Little League, Dixie Youth, Dizzy Dean. Like I said, I'm not prejudiced against any of them, and we let that committee decide what they build is best for our youth. That was one proposal I made. The other proposal was registering all the players together under Sulcog Youth Baseball. We can do that. Every person who registers has to say so in what we do, whoever the majority is, the charter we get that year. The double charter, you know, we discussed this, it's something you can do with Cal Ripken. I'm not totally up to date with the Little League rules, so I didn't know that was not an option for y'all. So if it's not, obviously, we can let board know the possible solution.
Do you want to know where we can find records for that meeting, for the Little League and the other seven leagues?
There's not, we didn't, it was, it wasn't a council session meeting, it was me talking with Rocky and Steve. And we had a few of the Cal Ripken commissioners sometimes, Steve, Ashton came in for Little League, and we discussed things. We never had an official council meeting in Little League.
Well, do you guys, any of you guys have any ideas on how we can come together and work together? I mean, have y'all thought about it, or, I'm just asking, I don't know.
That was my only idea about the Little League, you know, what people said, it's led international, and everybody chartered under that. So I mean, yes, there's not quite as many, in Alabama, it is one of them, but once you get out of Alabama, you know, it's, it's true. And I mean, that was my proposal, was just to play under Little League, like it's been in this town forever, and it feels like that. You know, we'd go with the 57 ball, we'd huddle me that, that does make sense.
You know, I'm sorry, Jeff Reynolds.
You gotta cut it off.
Jeff Reynolds, 51, big room. I've been on the Little League board for five years, I respect those five years as well. I think part of the betrayal, and you have to excuse me, part of the betrayal that I've seen as far as the council and social media is that Sulcog Little League is not willing to participate in these conversations or give these ideas. But if you look at the, if you look at some of the ideas that have been presented, all of these ideas revolve around Sulcog Red taking over the operations for baseball in the city.
I believe every person in this room, I believe the council members, when they say they have the kids interested at heart, but to sit here and say, we're not looking at some kind of financial benefit because of this, I don't necessarily believe that, simply because if that was the truth, then why not sit here and say, let's turn all the youth baseball back to Sulcog Red? Why is that not an option?
If that's not an option, maybe we change our charter to Cal Ripken, would you be willing to give all the youth baseball back to Cal Ripken if the red was not involved? Everything I'm hearing revolves of money flowing away from Little League or whatever charter we hold into the management hands of Sulcog Red. That's the issue.
I understand what you're saying, I see where you're coming from. As far as addressing the money issue, there is a budget passed for Parks and Rec, and that's their operation, where the entire year, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. They have people to pay, they have Steve to pay, they have the workers to pay. People that, money that's made off of registration fees, uniforms, tournaments, anything like that, goes straight back into the field. There is, it's a lot, a lot of work that has to be done, and it's not all about dirt work inside and keeping up equipment inside the property. Now, outsides, the parking lots, the streets may not look that great, been overlooked for a while, but that money that's being made off tournaments and registration fees goes right back into the facility, the kids, and probably concessions as well.
Yeah, I'm not doubting the accounting principles of the money flow between the city and the red. All I'm questioning is if we're going to look at options, what's... All I'm questioning is if we're going to look at options, let's give all the options. Right, why not give it all back to those that hasn't even been submitted, and nobody is wanted to talk about it?
Wouldn't that save the city money? If they're running back guns?
And y'all, and, you know, that's why I got y'all together, that was never, never mentioned in any of the meetings, that's why I got us together, to sit down and talk about it, and, you know, as far as that, you're saying you would like to have Cal Ripken parental board like you have right here, and run it all, maintain it all complex, and, and wing it and park yourself, is that what you're saying?
Well, last comment, I promise. So, basically for 55 years, the parent organization ran system worked until 10 years ago, and, you know, 10,000 different stories happened and Cal Ripken became involved. Correct? So the system's worked for 55 years, run by parents, coached by parents, and I understand you can do it through the rec board too, but doing what, doing what you say or accepting the proposal that you offer, basically takes control of the funding out of the board's hands. Completely. I, I mean, I understand we can still make decisions, but if you don't have the money, what good is it to make a decision? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I want to get over my head, just one, one comment. I don't know enough about Little League baseball, youth sports, youth baseball. One of the concerns that I have had, based on talking with some parents, is that the Little League organization, the kids don't have the same kind of opportunities to play because of the size of the, of the whole Little League organization in Alabama, that, that, and, and, so help me understand that, there're not, there're not as many teams, there're not as many charters. I'm good, no, I mean, just, you know, just help me understand if you had a difference between the two.
Yes, sir. In the fall.
Can you come up to the poll here?
Thank you, ma'am. In the fall, if you'll turn on the TV, Cal Ripken has never been on television, it was Little League World Series, the district opened one round in Georgia, the kids can get on television if they win the state. There's never been a Cal Ripken televised yet, and I want to see. I coached Little League 22 years, and we all the time, Steve Matthews on my 89, Little League State Championship team. We come to this city for 22 years in a row, we come to this city asking for money, for trips, for state trips. We, we finished first, second state for a while, we always, we always won, we won our district 13 years in a row. We never got a dime from this city on travel money, not one time, we had to sell doughnuts, we had to wash cars. The city of Silicon has never rolled us one check to help these kids travel. We made our own way, the city has never spent a dime on maintenance on that field. Now, they do play the outfield, but other than that, the volunteers, the, the, the parents raised money and kept that field up, so y'all all wrong about the money spent over there from the city, there ain't never been a dime spent on it. I've held up 22 seasons. I know.
Right now, what comes from is the competition factor, the current competition factor with the three districts in state, and having to go to council for these tournaments, and I guess there's Tuscaloosa District and Mobile District.
Yeah, that's not all correct, we don't have, you know, we, we chose to go to certain age groups and certain state areas, and that was just, I mean, a lot of that was my call, you know, Steve Matthews, he's a state person, he got, he asked us, you know, who wants to host, and I volunteered to go with it. I mean, it just, I mean, you don't want to make a drive down here all the time, I kind of split it up to play states front, so that wouldn't have been, I was a state person.
That's, that's, I know that it's how it's been, I mean, I played several, several years ago, I know how it's been, and I know the competition level from having 12, 14, 15 teams in, in major league and playing all day, every day, to, you know, dwindling numbers down, I'm not saying anything bad that Little League's doing, you know, I complimented on what Little League is doing right now, specifically looking at it from a logistics standpoint and what can be done in the future.
What broke Cal Ripken's shoes on the park?
Out, out of my time range, I was still in high school.
See, it ain't out of our time, we know what broke it.
And we can't, we can't.
I explained it, I explained it, one of our days. I'm hired, I'm gonna hire seven different state tournaments over here in this field, personally myself. I stayed in it 18 years, and jumped off Cal Ripken end to try to bust some of the top of Little League is what you've done.
Once again, this council had nothing to do with that, it was been done.
What you perpetuate.
Been in council for one year. And if you do have to say, make a statement or anything, please, please come up to the podium, state name and address, and, and speak with us, we'll be happy to address anything you got to say.
I've got a lead.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm home in three minutes.
Three minutes.
Somebody might follow me.
Somebody will give me their time?
Somebody might. I'll ask you.
That's not the way it works, go ahead, I'm starting.
Are that in the bylaws that doesn't work like that?
Those are the rules, I guess, those are the rules. The rule's just three minutes, go first.
I would break down a lot of people.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, turn them.
Not anyone else.
I had a couple of questions that were not addressed.
Name and address, please, I know.
Charlie Johnson, 63 Hampton. Um, first, Ashton, after you have made aware that Rocky Simpson is unable to make decisions when we have Little League, um, can you explain to us why you continue to direct communication to him rather than attending the set of meetings with the board?
Yeah, he was the only one that I talked to, and after we had the few meetings upstairs, and I talked to you, we hadn't met him.
After you talked to me?
Yes, on the phone.
After, after the vote was made, I mean, before, when you, um, are telling everyone that you had a dozen folks in Little League to try to.
Well, it was Rocky, the constituents that I'd been talking to the whole time.
Okay, so my question was, after he made you aware that he can't make those decisions, that they have to be discussed with the board, why was communication continuing to be presented to Rocky rather than making him attempt to meet the board?
Well, it was from.
So that this could have happened without public outrage and the decision to revoke the.
Well, it was, it was made, known to Rocky, what we talked about back and forth, and the first time, you know, he said we would relay, relay everything to the board, I'd let my board know, you know, during whatever the board, next board meeting was, and he would get back to me, and that's just, that's how we, that's how we ran it.
But if Rocky was talking to, um, to Ashton, and he's a member of your board, why didn't Rocky set up a meeting with your board? Rocky should have, um, set up that meeting, but I, I know I was just saying, but Rocky should have, since he was y'all's representative to Ashton, talk to him, he should have set up the meeting and then invited Ashton to that.
So can you tell me under what timeline you began communicating with, um, Rocky as representative of Little League, and what timeline was presented to him as to when you wanted to have a solution in place?
No, I talked to him several months before, um.
End of October.
Yeah, end of October, and we, yeah, right, and we got together, talked, and said, you know, we need to have, we need to come up a solution, I want, you know, we have one league, two leagues into one, and I said, you know, let's set for me time when both forests meet, and we'll do that, and at the first meeting, we had the commissioners, state commissioners there and stuff, and I had a meeting with, uh, college baseball coaches come in and, and other people like that, just to talk, get their side things, and, uh, we really had two kind of official meetings with, with everybody involved, and the rest of the time it was Rocky out talking, or him, him talking to his board.
Okay, so what type of timeline where it was given to Rocky as representative of board, or when you'd like to have a solution?
I'd never heard anything back, we, we talked about it.
Yeah, well, I told, I went to the board about the double charter.
But I'm asking you as the representative of the council, what timeline did you give to Rocky to say, we would like to have a solution by this point, or we're going to move forward?
Well, I thought, I, I said at the beginning when I mentioned it, that there was a provision in the clause, and we didn't want it to come in the worst case scenario, but in, based on previous experiences with other council people that had gone about this same situation like I have, and if they've been, I guess you would say for lack of better words, stonewalled and kept going without a response until registration, you know, in January, February, and then they would say, well, we're, we're the season, we'll talk to you next fall season, and it continued back.
I get you. Um, now that the decision has been made, take this way to Little League, what considerations have been given to the family, if they don't feel safe participating in the board meetings as the.
Let me interrupt, again, we have not said that we're taking fields away from Little League. We have put in process a one-year plan, which is a provision of the current agreement, to have discussions about the transition of the air of the parks into parks and rec, field into parks and recreation, but we have not had the discussion on parks and recreation. We have not, we have not said that Little League can't play ball, we've said that the agreement as it currently exists has been canceled because the contract allows us to cancel.
And that's the information that was heard in the letter that was sent to Little League?
The cancellation letter simply says the agreement is canceled, there's no explanation.
But there's no, there's nothing in the letter that tells Little League they have an option to do another contract with the city?
There will not be another contract with the city.
Okay, so, so field. So Little League is disagreeing, you know, you have to spin that to our agreement. Is there a way that we can get a list today to have the meeting work sessions that were, that took place that were related to?
This situation.
Meetings that you discussed with, uh.
Right, so anything that was discussed in our meeting with Rocky and these board members, I simply relayed what was said to the council, and I wasn't gonna put my bias on them and let them hear what I wanted them to hear. I wanted them to have their own opinion and go about it and vote how they want it, I'm the only one to vote, I can't vote anything. It's all our council up here, and that's why we're having this meeting, so everybody can have an opinion of a problem, informed opinion.
So they're having.
Any work sessions that this was discussed?
There are work sessions before every council meeting, work sessions are not places where action is taken, no action is taken.
But Ashton mentioned that he met with coaches and other people to get information so that he can make an informed decision. Were those discussions had via work sessions?
Those are non, that those are non-minute meetings, those are separate meetings.
Okay, so no work sessions.
Your time's up, but one more.
One more?
Yeah.
But there are so many. Um, if the main objective of consolidating Little League is in fact to have chemistry and competition among all children of our community, had interleague competition been considered for Little League and Cal Ripken could be tested to play games against one another, so that we can bolster that competition chemistry among our children without having to take away Little League or Cal Ripken from moving to something completely different?
Well, right now as I see it, it's previous, I guess, based on last year, it's Little League, I'm playing 57 ball, they've got to change the rules when playing Cal Ripken, and then go.
If I'm not mistaken, that's already been discussed, I know Little League itself, they have.
Have a lot of.
They have taught when they beat 57, it's just never.
And you'd have to change the field, do whatever you have to do. Once again, that, that's why we're here, to discuss options, it's never been brought up.
Rocky, is that an option for Little League, to play against Cal Ripken?
We would have to get labor from the, the league, and we would have to get it okay, I mean, we, we could say, yeah, that's fine, and then.
I know it's been discussed in the past between all-star teams playing each other and stuff, and.
I mean, I think.
During those conversations, it was said that Little League insurance wouldn't cover a player outside of that.
But, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not going to wait for it.
Does Cal Ripken's insurance ever happen?
We don't use Cal Ripken insurance, we have a separate insurance that we use for all of our sports, so you would be the, um, and addressing one of our concerns about Rocky not being a voting member, I'm not a voting member either, I'm the board. We are governed by a body of appointed board members as well, so all of my options or attempts to try to make this happen would all still have to be approved by my board as well. I'm simply bringing forward ideas I'm happy to.
Anybody else? I, can I say something?
Sure.
I'm.
Come on, hey, hey.
How you doing? How you doing? Yeah, I do, yeah, I do. My name is Torita Kirkland, I live at 228 South Cannon Avenue, and the reason why I'm here today is because I didn't know there was a problem, and how I found out it was a problem between the two leagues was I was watching Jimmy Day. Now, if we say we are here for the kids, are we here for the kids, or are we here for a fee? So if we're here for the kids, then we need to come together for the kids. Now, y'all have great reports about what you need to do for us to come together. If it's all about the kids, then it'd be all about the kids. If it's some money involved, put it out on the table, so don't go home with your private calls and your discussions, and then everybody at each other, Silicon is a wonderful city, and we don't need to be divided about no baseball fee. Now, this kind of will stay up and fly right. Now, really, when Little League was playing and Cal Ripken came out, remember when I thought, oh, nobody get offended, I thought Cal Ripken came out and looked like he has to play more. That's the truth, yes I did, because I, I got great kids playing. So the thing is, there's times, you know, we got money issues, family friends, you know, this is my money, so guess what, my child will play more. So if it's all about the kids, then it'd be about the kids instead of this baseball fee, and that's all I got to say.
I really don't know how, I'm calling that one, I was really trying to beat her up, I saw her coming. Uh, I really just got a couple points, and then just something that I just, my name, yeah, it's on my name tag. Uh, my name is Joseph Nelson, uh, I live here locally over there behind the Armory, and I work at the Armory, so if you'd mind hanging out, if you trust, if you'd like to. Uh, I actually, I'm not from Silicon, I lived here a few years back, moved, moved, uh, back home to Dosum, which is home for me, and we moved back up here when I took full-time positions here at the Armory, uh, so this is really my, my, my kids play their first year in Little League this year, uh, we've always had Dixie Youth, I've always been a fan of Dixie Youth, uh, just because that's what we had, and I coached it, I've done it for years, my oldest and now my youngest, uh, so it was kind of an experience to play Little League this year, more than my kids already enjoyed, uh, but before I go talk about that, just a couple things I wanted to say. The gentleman right here in Alabama, sure, he stood up, got passionate about what he was saying, y'all was, you made a comment earlier about how the city's using its resources to maintain those fields over there, uh, but that's incorrect, uh, the city handles utility and lives, but the fields are volunteer-based, um, and the parents, the coaches, uh, even the players, I know some of y'all were saying the children around the workday, uh, maintain those fields, because I believe the contract from long ago, it was in the contract, that we had to maintain those fields, okay? Uh, so, so in fact, you're on there, uh, and I probably you're on here, so you'll get your chance.
Well, can I interrupt you? If I say that I am wrong, what I thought I said, when we're just trying to utilize all of our resources, because I mean, we wanna, if we're gonna try to make everything better and fix everything up, we need to, we need to make sure nothing gets flipped out, that's, that's what I was saying.
And, and, and I understand, but you talk about money, you know, and, and I know it takes money, uh, to, 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 to the fields over there at the rec, uh, rec, okay? Uh, this doesn't cost anything other than the license, so you can just leave that, okay? Which is actually one thing, and, and don't yell at me too much, but I don't know a whole lot about Cal Ripken, other than what I see on social media, and I take that, and it's going to create a rise as much as I can, uh, because we got a lot of keyboard warriors out there, uh, but, you know, Cal Ripken has people in place to run and do those positions, and literally, the parents run the concessions hands, okay? It's, it's all volunteer all across the board, okay? So the, the kids get to see the parents out there in the community doing, uh, not only watching them play ball, and watching them play ball, but also, you know, teaching them some life skills, we, you know, picking up trash up on the hill, yeah, God forbid, kids gotta pick up a little more than they do in the house, okay? Uh, the second thing was, you made a comment about baseball being great years ago, and schools and everything, the only thing I want to say on that was, was that the score Cal Ripken came to town?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been for a while.
And that's, that's just kind of where I was going with that. Uh, next, uh, if you don't want to abolish Little League, because you've said over and over again, you don't want Little League, you know, to, to have to go away, well, if you take the fields away, what do you expect them to do?
The fields will still be available through parks and recreation, if our discussion with parks and recreation supports.
Okay, so you want, one more.
But if there's, but if there's, you know, unification is a good idea. If it doesn't work, we'll find a place for Little League to keep playing Little League ball.
So, so you're gonna keep testing the waters, putting these kids up there?
But having healthy discussions about the best way that the city can build improved recreational facilities, and best provide for the youth, is some, is a discussion we should have.
And I agree.
If discussions break down and it doesn't work, we're not gonna stop people from playing ball.
But, but you, but you were sitting there saying something like, Bob, what do you suppose, Little League, where do you suppose to play? Are we going to rent the fields from the rec board?
No, you're going to, you'll reserve them from the rec board.
Okay, so are we going to, are we gonna get the same, uh, looks as far as renting them as, say, Cal Ripken would?
Again, we have not had any discussion about.
It's just something, I know, I'm not trying to start riots, it's just something, because look, I, I know, I know Steve Masters, I know him for a year, I usually go to see him, we play men's softball, okay, so that's, so we've, we've gone back and forth, you know, for a year now, so I'm not one way or the other, but I see something to think about.
But it's not, the, the city's not going to tell people that they can't play baseball.
Well, yeah, but, but you, subliminally, you're not finding a solution to what Little League is supposed to be, other than you're going to come together.
We have, we have tried to create environment where we have. We have, we have tried to create environment where we have a clear, have, have.
But you give us the ultimatum, not by your own, you give an ultimatum.
If we're working on budgets, if we're working on, on strategic planning, we don't want those fields to be left out.
So can I ask this then? And she said she can get to it, but was the same, I would call it ultimatum, was the same thing presented to Cal Ripken? Because, because you wanted to merge, but what do you want to merge under Little League and Cal Ripken? And did they get the same?
That's why we're discussing.
Okay, I mean, because you, say again, you said that. Say again.
He said, Little League will not get into the old guy.
And we, we're not.
Not that one, you're sorry?
From the city.
We're saying the contract doesn't need to be with the city. The city should be in the business of sports management and. Let me talk, people, let me talk. What I'm saying is, parks and recreation is just that, to handle parks and recreation facilities. And that's what the contract would need to be on.
So could Little League fall under Parks and Recreation?
That's what we're discussing.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get it. Okay, and the last thing, all right, I don't have boys, right? All I keep hearing you talk about is baseball, baseball, baseball. I got two girls. Now, I'm, I'm gonna balance you. I, I care about baseball because I know y'all got boys out there, but my girl's softball. My girl's softball. Is Cal Ripken got something to provide for my kids to play softball? And if they don't, what are you gonna do about that?
Right, right now, we have with softball is kind of a sublease option with Little League. Softball con, there's a softball contract with the city. It's all under Little League. So they, that board, softball board, have to go to Little League board, talk about their options, because all in all, Little League, this board would have to let them out of the contract for them to do anything else. And if they do let them out, then they could choose to pay whatever charter they would want to play in.
Did y'all make a deal with them, Little League or something?
The what?
Did y'all make a deal with them?
No, I went to their board meeting and said just what I just said, that we have no contract.
They were, they could have the field up top and use the bottom field any time they want.
They were worried, no, they were worried about losing their field that they put money into and, and played for the whole time. I didn't say anything otherwise. I didn't say anything negative. I said they were in the contract with y'all, they weren't in with us, and they would have to come to y'all for anything was decided.
I'm strongly western, I'm the president of Silicaga Little League Softball, and we handled it the right way. We had our emergency meeting, we invited him, and there was not a deal made. He did not guarantee us a field, bottom field, top field, or nothing. I don't know who told you that, but. And all we did is ask him what our future looked like, because we knew if we was gonna get a field somewhere, we can hope it was gonna be over here or over there. But I will tell you what I did asking, and our board asking, we asked if we could have that field. We should there, because we spent a lot of money on it. paying their forty thousand dollars in nine years. Because everybody invited, everybody can see what's supposed to be. Another thing was softball, yeah, most of them, is we know we gonna have to have a field. We want that field, and there was no backhand deals, he went the secret. He come to us and talked to us. We had questions, he answered it. He left, our board members talked, and he'll make him stay transparent, not say a word about this. Because if it's your fact, and your fact, whoever's fact, it's Cal Ripken and Little League. The girls is not in this matter.
We gonna have this, we're gonna.
I was told, I told them strictly they were under your contract, or your sublease, and not us. We couldn't let them out of any contract with softball.
And I, I ain't asking in our first meeting about, I said, girls are the ones that hurt you. Is there anything we can do with this contract that can, they can still play, but yet they can play under something else without us losing our, us losing our field?
If we wanted to honor our contract with y'all, and then instead of coming to the city, trying to go behind y'all's back, get our own field, we, we just go, we're gonna honor our contract with y'all. And if something happens to y'all, then we might come to the city and ask for a lease on the field of ours. If that, if that happens, then our board will have a meeting this camp. We will explain what we want, and tell us if we're gonna get it or not. I guarantee you one thing, we gonna have a field somewhere.
That's right.
We have, uh, five minutes left. We can step a little bit, you two.
If you're a parent and I live at one thousand five west of the place, who owns this property?
City.
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 So, if the city owns the property, just like any landlord, once the contract expires, do you not have a right to change the lease on the property?
Well, it did expire.
But if there's an option for the city to cancel the contract, in the middle of the contract, do you not have that option?
Turns out, all the call said was to present the one-year, I guess, termination notice. That was simple as, I mean, I think you have a copy over there. That's what it stated. And our contract was re-signed in two thousand fourteen for a renewal, when, I guess in that time when it came up for renewal, they could have had discussions on renegotiating it, but.
So the purpose of canceling the contract is to, in order to take control over the field or to eliminate the league?
No, there's no.
There's no problem.
There's no, there's no.
There's no problem. It's either to take control over the field or eliminate the league. What are you trying to do?
We, we desire to restore over the next year.
Have your hair, please.
The ability to properly integrate these parks under the auspices of Parks and Recreation, which is responsible for all of our other facilities in the city, so that for budgeting, planning, and, and renovation and new construction, we can properly include that area rather than be elected and master city plan.
So what you want to do is take all sporting activities that take place on city property and put them underneath Parks and Recreation for control?
All facilities.
All facilities.
Yes.
So if someone wants to participate on city property, then they have to go through Parks and Recreation to be approved.
Yep, the agreement moves from the city to Parks and Rec.
No financial motivation whatsoever.
So, the next question is, is the city gonna take responsibility for maintenance of all the facilities?
We haven't had the discussion.
This is the first meeting, this is the first meeting to take place, to explore, this is the first meeting to take place, to explore the options, to let the people be heard. We're elected to serve the will of the people. And that's why everybody was invited here, and I didn't want a one-on-one meeting or something in private. I wanted everybody's opinions and everybody's thoughts, because that's what we're gonna do. Is come up with the best possible solution for the kids and for long-term, five, ten, twenty-year plans, and for the city as a whole.
You know, I, I'm, I'm kind of like everybody else. I, I don't think you're looking from the aspect of the children and what's best for the children, but I do think, believe that you're looking at what's best for the aspect of finances of the city. And I will agree with that. But just like Noble Park, if I want to rent a pavilion, I gotta go through Parks and Recreation and pay a certain amount of money to use that facility. The city is responsible for cleaning and maintaining it, and you still have control over it. So I don't see what the issue is with these baseball fields that belong to the city. If you're gonna accept the responsibility for the maintenance of them and you rent them out on an individual basis, because they're open to everybody in the city to use, not just Silicaga Little League or not Cal Ripken. If I want to take a group of kids over there to a city park and just hit ballstorm and throw ballstorm, I should be able to do that, because I'm a resident of this city. And I can pay taxes and spend money like everybody else. I don't think you should be able to close the ball field off just because Cal Ripken has the contract or Silicaga Little League has the contract. Maybe you could, you need to consider not even contracting it out, rent it out on a case-by-case basis, and you take responsibility for the utilities, the maintenance, and the upkeep. If they need special equipment, basics, whatever, they bring them with them, install them, and take them with them when they need it.
And that's what, right now, the contract's with the city, so in order for that, like you said, to happen, we would have to nullify that contract and put it under Parks and Rec, because they're the ones right now that have to maintain the current facilities.
Well, everything needs to be under Parks and Rec anyway. Why is the city council trying to control, control Parks and Recreation? I realize they come under your venue, but if you've got a Parks and Recreation board, then it's sports. It's recreation. Put it under.
Now, we're off, we've gone out there tonight.
That's not true, Sam. I don't have dog.
I'd like to make a statement, just a minute. My statement, one more reason. The recent discussions concerning Cal Ripken and Silicaga Little League have highlighted the passion of families.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Do what?
I can't hear you.
Did you hear me now?
Yeah, you can hear me.
I started off. The recent discussions concerning Cal Ripken and Silicaga Little League have highlighted the passion that families have for their children to be involved in quality sports programs. And we are fortunate that Silicaga has two great youth baseball organizations. My personal, personal feeling that whether or not the two programs merge into one, and the issue is better settled between the two organizations themselves and the parents who rescue their children. Because if the ultimate goal is to provide our youth with the opportunity to have positive characterability baseball experience, I feel the city council should seek to repeal the lease, Little League feels. Thus rescinding the action previously taken by the council, hoping this will, with all best parties, opportunity to have a productive conversation and facility arrangement and work it out.
So, y'all, if y'all do a labor, get the fields you're going on up to Little League, but y'all can't do it with a little league name, like, the city can't stop us from getting a charter. And so when we go out and build our own fields, we've been talking about it, I mean, that, everybody knows, that's how you're gonna get all the kids to build. You're gonna build something and grow it here. So, I mean, if that's what we do, we go out and build.
Y'all just gonna be a chain.
You, you buy the property, you, you build it, it's, it's yours to do as you please.
And then, I mean, what kind of customer we don't hear, when, you know, phase one, we get baseball fields done, but the way we're getting it done right now, we might have a phase two with soccer and play football fields. And there goes the Parks and Rec, because there's gonna be those little builds you play when they come out somewhere else on two eighty or twenty one, I mean.
I mean, if that can be done by you and yours and your board and stuff, I mean, we highly encourage it, but, you know, right now, that's what we're putting in our.
With Little League and volunteer, there, there is, with something a friend of mine.
You know, that, taking that and putting the complex out wherever you may, and, you know, that's highly encouraged. It's been able to do and upkeep for the years to come. You know, and you say taking away football, basketball, whatever it may be, you know, if I'm looking at it, if I'm, you know, being run into the ground right now, being short-staffed, that takes relief off of, off of the Parks and Rec, I mean.
That's, we're trying to take that relief on that, dollars. The current dollars in Little League will come back to London, but.
Whether it be in city, right now, whether it be in city-owned property, it would have to be maintained like the whole complex is. I know if we want to get out of contract and go all one Little League, get out of both contracts, it would have to be, Parks and Rec would have to be maintained. Do what? That's another option, and that's what we're here for. I've never heard that.
You can hear all the options, and I, I guess I'm just so frustrated because I sit here and look at y'all's faces. Y'all just, y'all look so defeated, and I guess that hurts my feelings because y'all really. No, I'm just, this is just, I mean, but that. Can I finish? Just let me finish, because it really hurts my feelings because y'all really think that we would sit up and say y'all can't play on those fields. We're, we're not. The contract is up for renegotiation. We're not saying, we don't know what's up with the league. But that's, but this is what I'm saying. This is why we're here, for all options.
What happens, negotiations go. What happens after twelve months if negotiations come, come together?
But you, you, you're already saying that, you're already basically saying that they're gonna kick us off the field, so we should just move away and build our own field.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, what happens, what happens after twelve months if there's no contract?
We don't rescind the contract in twelve months and nothing, no negotiations come about, the lease is voided and the fields property goes back to the city.
And that action was been taken, right? Nothing really has to happen. It just has to expire from the time.
Right, and that's why we're working on solutions right now.
All right, so here, here's my issue. My Ken McArthur, I live in thirteen O two Lucky Lane. Uh, Lee, I, I don't know you at all, but I play major league baseball. Uh, I'm gonna talk about competition. I play at high school. Like a living coach now, four hundred kids are playing my program. It's basically run out of Birmingham and four different states. These guys come to me, I make a living because parks and rec departments have dissolved in major metro areas. True. Heard my part, for example, at twenty-six hundred kids, they're the open mouth, open nightly, twenty-six hundred kids last, uh, ten years ago, and last year they had four hundred. And then this is major metropolitan area. All right, so I, I take offense when you start the meeting out reading your, your, your prepared statement, and your quote was that it is silly to think that the city wants to take away the field. So when you have a meeting like this and this many people show up, and it's truly about the kids, it's insulting to say that it's silly, personally. Two, Ashton, you said there have been no behind closed door meetings, okay, and there's a disorderful low attendance at the council meetings. So that's two points. Number one, you've already, you've already admitted that there have been behind closed door meetings, okay, with Rocky and Steve. And by the way, I'm high school teammate with Steve, lifelong friend with Rocky, close friends with him now. Steve and I, I, he was a senior off the crash, I called him, he picked, I know him very well. I think Steve and Rocky both have the best interest of kids, Mark. I dare not beat y'all. I think you might think you might, but you don't really know what you're talking about. Uh, and then two, when you're talking about the historical low attendance at the meetings, that's when you took advantage to push this vote through, because if, if I'm not mistaken, it was on the agenda one time before you voted on it, you rescinded it from the agenda.
That was not true. What was on the agenda was the signing of the contract, of the ten-year contract that was originally signed in two thousand seven, so that date in two thousand seventeen came up for renewal for the ten years.
It was up for renewal to two thousand twenty-four, wasn't it?
This is, this is my point. We had that on the schedule, because on the time hop or whatever, that how our clerks keep their records, that came up, hey, this ten-year contract for renewal, they didn't take into account that it was renewed on an early renewal basis, um, in two thousand fourteen. So that contract had already been renewed, so we just took it off.
Well, in that situation, perception is reality, and, you know, you should probably understand that, because the perception is what's around always been there. Um, in my opinion, you're grandstanding when you're saying this for the kids, and you're talking about you want to get back to top-tier baseball. It, it's, it's a misnomer to say that any youth rec league baseball is top-tier anymore. It is not. Period. It's travel baseball. It's elite level baseball. You cannot play at the highest level to play in a recreation league. You cannot do it. It, it's obsolete, okay? So what this is, ninety-nine point nine percent of kids that play in this league aren't gonna play at their high school, they're not gonna play in college, and they're definitely not gonna play professionally. Okay, so it's about developing character, as, as the men in the military were saying earlier, and, and that's a prime example of, of a character person. Um, those are the reasons you have these leagues, okay, and merging them together, so you can have a stronger all-star team, and you can host up, hoist up a trophy for the Silicaga, you know, state championship is a ridiculous notion. That's not for the best interest of the kids. That might be a good experience for those eight or ten or twelve that, that get to go do that, that otherwise wouldn't. And I say eight or ten or twelve, because you're gonna have more on the team. Some of those kids, if they don't have that opportunity, they're gonna find it anywhere, or find it elsewhere regardless. Okay, so, so to act like you're giving these kids the only opportunity they have to play competitive baseball, that's not factoring. Um, missing chemistry and competition, you know what? Competition is competition. One game is competition. Now, if you want to talk about competing on the highest level, that's a little bit different story. But it goes back to what you're, what I was saying about having, you know, the thought that recreational baseball is the highest level. It is not. Okay, so, talk about competition and chemistry. Any team you ever play on, whether they're one team in the league, two teams in the league, a hundred teams in the league, if you're playing something, you should be trying to win. And that's the competition, and then the team chemistry aspect, okay? So the level of play is irrelevant right there. Um. All right, then you, then you talked about the wear and tear on the fields earlier, Mr. Perry. Um, the Cal Ripken fields, they play multiple sports on those fields. They play adult softball, they play football, light football, type of football, soccer, baseball, youth softball. they play football, light football, type of football, soccer, baseball, youth softball, whatever else. Little League plays Little League, that's it. So you talk about wear and tear, that's a moot point as well. Um, so, I take offense to the fact that you ramrod this deal through without having a plan. In my opinion, if you could bring both leagues together, or all kids in the city together, I'd say that's great, that's great, but to, to do it on another agenda without having a plan, to really have it to be an investment for the kids, it's insulting, insulting the city, and hopefully it will flag on voting. Um, these proposals you're talking about, you mentioned that you met with some college coaches that were kind of official meetings, I'm not sure what a kind of official meeting is, but who's the coach, who's the head coach that you meet with?
Well, I'm not going to get liberty to say how well I do, I want to.
Well, I'm sure they could, why would they not?
Do what?
Why would they not?
All they did was come in and give their opinion on the current status of youth baseball, so, and the coaches that came in were-
So, so if you're not willing to say who that was, you shouldn't bring up the fact that you, that you met anybody.
Right, coach that came in was DJ Combs, and all he did was say his word on what he thought about two leagues in the town, and what's in youth baseball.
Is DJ here here? No, DJ's not here, so, I, I, you know, whatever DJ may or may not have said, I will say this, DJ, his brother and his family grew up in Little League, DJ's a college coach, he's made a living being a college coach for his whole career, having to be played in college and then became a volunteer assistant in college, DJ worked his butt off to get where he is, and he makes a living coaching baseball.
You're, you're over, one more, one more point.
Okay. And can we wait, try to finish, isn't this valuable enough for us to hear him out?
One more point.
So, so it's mine.
I've already asked Austin earlier, he said that it was, that he controls and he makes the rules, which is-
Really? Wow. So, um, to do this and to vote on it and to send this league a letter without consulting anybody, without, without even having the plan or any plan in place to form a committee, so it's, I live in Solocogah, all right, it, it, to my knowledge, I'm the only player of Solocogah that ever be drafted in the first five rounds of the Bay Area League draft out of high school, I'm one of only three that ever played Bay Area League baseball from the sound. I grew up, I played Little League, played Babe Ruth, I played Dixie U, played Senior Little League, I played travel baseball, and I played at every minor league stop on the way up, every one of them. It's given me everything I've got in my life, it's given me my career, it's given me all these contacts that I have, I mean, everything I have has come from baseball. Okay, not, not one of those things has come because I won the state championship, which I won the only two in Solocogah high school history. And then one more point to say this, about the high schools, you talk about enhancing the high school program, if I'm not mistaken, we have kids in Little League and Cal Ripken that go to BB Comber, Solocogah, Playable, Middle Borough, um, Houston Central, CBA, and probably some other schools around here. So, so to act like you're going to enhance this program to benefit the Solocogah High School, that's not a valid point either. On top of that, has anybody consulted the new high school coach of Solocogah, which is one of the better coaches we've had, one of the more experienced coaches we've had with these new facilities, has anybody one time, if I was to reach out to that guy?
Yes.
And what did he say?
He told me to keep him in the loop.
He told, told you to keep him in the loop, so, so what did you ask him?
I would ask him, just like DJ made an appearance, that he would like to come and make an appearance, but he's been new in town, and he's been busy playing catch-up with the current team and the facilities that he's been handed, and he simply didn't have time to leave.
Didn't have time to leave. Okay, and so, did, did you propose that you want to bring these people together to enhance this high school program, is that what you're pushing for?
To complete, better funnel them into the program.
Okay, well, I would also suggest this too, you got a Hoover, you got a Mountain Brook, you got an Oakmount, you got a Chelsea, you got any of these places, Chelsea has the Chelsea Baseball Club, it's run by the high school coach, he was always under nine years old, they also have their league, and now that will be me, Michael Stoff, that's correct, he's from Allen Anderson, all right, you got the Hoover Baseball Club, same dude, Hoover High School Coach, he runs it from the bottom of them, so if you want to enhance your high school, then you get the high school coach involved, and you also get other people in the community that have, that truly have an unbiased best interest of the kids, Mark, like myself, like Jeff Bell, the new high school coach, like Kuki Wilson, who's a former professional player, who makes a living coaching travel ball and doing lessons in umpire, and a whole host of other people, including DJ, and whoever else that play high level baseball and knows what they're talking about, consult those people, bring them together to form a committee or to at least talk about it. So, your idea to bring the league together, you know, that's, that's not, that's not a bad idea, but, but to ramrod your vote through when you're missing a councilman at that same day, well, definitely not there, to do that at that time, push that through just so you can come to this and try to get your way, is ridiculous and is not an investment for the kids.
My question for Kenan Rowe, why did, uh, we do the contract three years early? Boards change because kids grow up, new set of parents, uh, work their way up through volunteer and coaching, being on the board. But the two Little League boards came to my council, and they asked for a commitment early, because they were about to embark on continuing to embark on some significant expense of money, but even more in volunteer time, effort, professional people volunteering their time and efforts to do upgrades over there, and they just wanted a commitment from the city that it was going to mean something. Yes, the one year I think was discussed, and it was discussed as a tail end, not in the middle. I've known Kenan since he was growing up, all the way through baseball, by the way, I spent a lot of time looking over the catcher's shoulder, and the umpire's shoulder, best catcher I ever saw. And I learned my love of baseball from Dave Duncan, you know who I'm talking about. This guy was better as a player, but he was right on the mark, that most of these kids, it's not about baseball, they're there to play and have fun, but most of these kids are not going to go to the next level, every level you go up, a few kids fall by the wayside. Like you said, very few of them are going to end up playing Babe Ruth, high school, college, or, or beyond. It is about character building, and that's why Little League is so important, because there are mechanisms in place in Little League, the volunteerism, it's structured, it's something that's a, a part of the whole system that they have. Formalized volunteerism, that's the, the word that Little League uses on its website, they have specific programs to promote character building, community involvement, family togetherness, and more, that's part of the point of dads and moms working on the field and working in the concession stands. That's why guys that I've grown up with, watching coach, good friends, putting their time and effort long after their kids got through the program, I stuck around after my kids were done playing, I coached for ten years, I broadcast for almost thirty, I played Little League, and I can tell you, it's about a lot more than kids playing baseball. And I learned that lesson from the guy who gave me a microphone and let me go out, he was part of the establishment of Little League baseball in the first place, and it meant something to Curtis Lyles, it meant a lot to him. Every time I broadcast a game from out of town, following a lot of these folks and their, their play, he called me before and after every single game to remind me that I'm there, not just to tell everybody what's going on, but to watch the game for parents, grandparents, and siblings that couldn't be there. It's a family thing, and Little League baseball is about a lot more than baseball. Little bit of trivia that I learned this last week from this guy who was around when we started Little League in Solocogah, you know what's the first batter get up to the plate over here, this field? I'll give you a hand, he truly lived the things that his one year, because of his age, one year in Little League taught him, and he turned it into a long career, building on the correlations between youth sports and the idea that character and community matter, and they mattered enough that this man, that he spent his life carrying that on, generation after generation, and taking it to a whole new level, and I know because I spent a lot of time in those broadcasts with him sitting beside me, talking about just that very thing. And not that it matters to this discussion, but I learned a lot, and a lot of kids learned a lot from Coach Harold Brooks, who was the first Little League batter, that's a history. The, a lot of the mayors that we've had, a lot of the city councilmen, a lot of our business leaders established this league, and if you want to say that it's passe, do you know why most of the teams that we used to call rivals in district and state play, why they're no longer in Little League, the ones that have moved on? I do, because I asked, they were playing follow the leader. Most every one of those communities has held votes every single year, and it's only been one or two votes that separated them from staying with Cal Ripken or going back to Little League, and I promise you right now, there are enough people in those communities that they're willing to follow the leadership again, of the community that they knew was Little League in the state of Alabama, it's called Solocogah.
It runs a little past our hour, so, again, thank you very much for coming, we look forward to continuing to talk. Sheriff, go.
I'd like to say, we started the petition on twelve twenty-two, uh, in that timeframe, all, all petition masters that you were sending to reverse the vote to terminate the Little League contract, uh, within that timeframe, we have nine hundred and four signatures and counting, uh, and as we, you know, you said to come up and say our address, I guess you only want people from Solocogah to speak, uh, this affects a lot more people from Solocogah, I mean, there's, uh, you know, people from, uh, they're now living in Georgia that grew up here in Little League, and it's, it's affected them, uh, their traditions, their memories, uh, I mean, there, there's people all around this area that signed this petition, uh, and I'd like to keep the petition going, if y'all want to sign it and, uh, get our voice heard by the council, I think, uh, that's going to be a good point.
Please do let us have a copy of that.
Hey, I have a question, you can ask me, I've been trying to get in, trying to get in.
All right, one more, one more.
I'm Don Stevens, and I live fifteen forty-three Brick Yard Road, and we all say this about, you know, the kids and all, and, and I respect that, and I sat on the board, Solocogah Parks and Rec Board for two terms, but I think it's wrong that we're trying to take Little League away from us. Um, and one other question, we're all here about the kids, uh, anybody from the Solocogah Parks and Rec Board, stand up, guarantee you there's nobody here. None, none of them, not one member, not the president, not anybody, that's the things that I got fed up with when I was on the board. Now, I know that you say it's not about money and this, that, and another, but you know what, everything is about money, but it takes money, it's not great. If he said there's a hundred seventy-six kids, times seventy dollars registration to Cal Ripken, that's twelve thousand something dollars, and with five other sports, football, basketball, all the other sports, that's sixty thousand dollars here. Solocogah Parks and Rec does a fine job with the budget that they are giving, outstanding job, my hats is off to Steve Masters and the rest that work for him, they have to work under a budget that comes from the, from the city of Solocogah, because they're at it. Everybody needs more money, I'm not saying this politically, I'm not saying they glide, I'm not saying this, that, or another, but the more money they make, the more they sustain the fields and parks and everything. I'm for both, I think that both, I think competition is good in anything, whether it's business, sports, it doesn't matter, competition's good. I think that they ought to have a right to play Little League, if they don't give you the fields, what year's you come here, what, nineteen forty-three?
Nineteen fifty-three.
Nineteen fifty-three? Find somewhere else to go, and I'm not knocking Cal Ripken.
Why, we got to go.
Well, you gotta go because they sent you a letter.
We know how the Indians play up there.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I, I'm just saying, I don't think it's right if they go away with Solocogah, but that's not mine, that's not my decision, that's not my organization, um, I'm at a girl, they got, you know, she, LA, and all of that, but I don't think it's right. And if you say that we're all here for the kids, like I said, where's, where's the Parks and Rec Board? What about those other fields that's over there in the project? Does everybody care about those kids over there that don't have seventy dollars to play?
They don't want to go to the music, you know.
Why can't they have the fields over there, those kids came forward to play all, and I guess Little League, go down on your registration fee, go down to twenty-five or thirty-five, get more, get more people, you know, and it's good to have competition, but the city's here, and they have to run the city, and they have their enemies, and they have to take care of the rec, and that's just the way it is. They pay the power bill, and they pay your water bill.
They've been paying.
That's right, they've been paying it, and now this new council has changed their mind, and they have a right, but the last council all got voted out because there was no competition.
They voted.
And also, the mayor was, am I not right, Jim, was that what the big argument was the last time?
They did vote him out too.
Now, I'm not saying vote him out, I'm not saying they're wrong, but I'm saying when you start to mess with people's kids in this small town, are you seeing the movie Friday Night Lights? That's all there is to do around here, is sports, we ain't got no movies, we don't have any big malls, go mess with people's kids over the stage, I mean, you know, you know it all, man, and no matter what high school you play at, you don't have competition, but you're also have who's who's, and that's going to be it, Cal Ripken, Little League, my son didn't make All-Stars, cause so-and-so used to date my sister, and this one's been divorced, and I'm going to get mad, and I'm going to sign up for Cal Ripken, and then next year, Cal Ripken's not going to pick your son for All-Star, and it's because my sister dated him, and blah, 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 I'm on that Little League.
That's right.
And that's the way it is, that's competition. Good luck, I hope, I hope this city can survive both leagues.
Was that something you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, and Mr. Owens, can you hear me? Okay. Well, I'm, I'm speaking up, I've never been noted to not speak up.
Amen.
Okay. Uh, gentlemen that got up there and said that, uh, we come here, um, to get our way, I'm speaking as dad is dead on a personal basis, I did not come here to get my way, I come here to hear from you all, and I've done that, it's a known fact that some of us was not privileged, Rock, you knew, how many other council members did you see at any of those meetings that we've discussed? Not any. And these other council members that's here can attest to this, the only reason, whether you like that reason or not, the only reason that I went along with the intent, with the understanding, and if I'm, if I've been misled, then we got a problem on the council itself, the only reason that I did that, and that we could rescind that or reverse it at any time, that's the only reason I did that, I did that so I could hear from each of you. But now, it is offensive for people that may not know us personally to get up here and call us nothing much more than dogs, just because you think we're doing something that we're not doing, sure, we, we're a family, so to speak, and we've got our agree to disagree on some things. But now, I'm telling you, I never come here with intention or even believing that the Little League was one hundred percent ours. Hey, you're going to need to convince me of the statement you made earlier, and it's, it's probably come up a couple of times, that you wouldn't get the fields back, now, that's, that's not the, that's not the understanding I've had of this, after listening to each of you, then we would make the decision whether to let you have the fields back, does that make sense to anybody?
Well, when Perryman said that Little League wouldn't give the fields back, well, and I know that-
That's not, that was not my understanding.
No, that was not you, that was not your understanding, I understand that, I'm with you, too.
You voted for it, Doug.
You voted for it, don't you?
Well, you, you're right. I did. And I'll, I'll skip by that. But I did that with the assumption, you should know, that we could repeal that.
Someone does the thing to repeal it. That's, that's my question.
Three votes.
Can we vote now?
Not two.
Can you vote right now?
Can't vote now.
When can you vote?
You said it again.
They said we'd get them in. But yesterday, you got all the way up to the meeting.
Yeah, we want to.
We have to write the letter.
This is something that we, we, we started the process of having a dialogue so we can fully understand. Again, as I said in the beginning, we have no interest in killing the Little League.
When's the vote allowed? By, by rule, when's the vote allowed?
We can set the agenda at any time.
When do you intend to set it?
We're not prepared to do that. We're, we're now in a fact finding mode. We're meeting with you and having discussions.
So is there additional meetings coming?
We would like to have some additional meetings.
Can we set them down?
With, with the board and like Mr. Black has said, we're, we're not trying to, we, I mean, we can't do away with Little League anyway. We only.
Can we have the letter read, please?
Now read the letter.
Hi, I'm Brandon Turner.
Let, let everybody in this room here.
All right. I'm Brandon Turner, two feet and five pancake length. Actually, I live outside the city limits, but I'm on the board. So here's the letter. Uh, read notice for termination of agreement for land use of Solocaga Baseball Fields in Winger Park. To whom is making certain? This letter will serve as notice to you that the city council of the city of Solocaga on December nineteenth, two thousand, two thousand seventeen has persuaded to that original agreement dated November twentieth, two thousand seven, has renewed, extended for an additional seven years through council action taken August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, opted to exercise its right to terminate the agreement as amended. A copy of the original agreement and the amendment thereto are enclosed here. The termination shall be effective one year from the date of this notice. Based on the termination notice, Solocaga Little League Association shall have no rights to the said facilities and shall cease use of Winger Park on or before December twentieth, two thousand eighteen. And if you have any questions concerning, concerning this matter, please let me know. Sincerely, James Hableton, Mayor.
Sounds pretty clear to me.
Suspended termination. Again, thank you for coming. I'm absolutely sure that we will figure everything out to everyone's advantage. We're not going to just take the fields away and, and it's a discussion that we will continue to have, but I am absolutely convinced that we will work out something for everyone's satisfaction.
Thank y'all again. We, we sent, we had to let her out to let everybody know to come together. We didn't want to be stonewalled. We didn't want to, want to keep the discussion going for years. We wanted to have it now like we're doing. And I'm looking forward to have more. We had more ideas thrown out today than we had in previous meetings. So the more, we sit down and talk about this, the more likely we are to come out with a solution. So thank y'all again for coming.
Thank you for coming.